Are significantly lower than the pre-treatment and the lake. Those measurements were actually lower than in the last two years for phosphorus in the lake. So that is promising. I attended the Yuba Water Agency pod meeting and I once again can't remember what that acronym stands for. But it's, they discussed grant proposals this morning. And our grant for $300,000 for treatment of the lake is, was approved to move on to their full body for deliberation and hopefully approval. So that meeting will be on the 19th, which I will attend and present there. That will allow us to continue to treat the lake for.
Treatment for phosphorus completed and that's been in place and operating for the probably month or two. And so far it looks promising, although well is still producing water with phosphates. We've measured it pre-treatment and post-treatment. And the post-treatment levels are significantly lower than the pre-treatment and the lake. Those measurements were actually lower than in the last two years for phosphorus in the lake. So that is promising. I attended the Yuba Water Agency pod meeting and I once again can't remember what that acronym stands for. But it's, they discussed grant proposals this morning. And our grant for $300,000 for treatment of the lake is, was approved to move on to their full body for deliberation and hopefully approval. So that meeting will be on the 19th, which I will attend and present there. That will allow us to continue to treat the lake for weed abatement and algae control if granted.
To the chair. What's the timeframe on that? Does that get us all the way through to the end of 2024 or, I mean?
The, how far will those dollars go?
Well, no, yeah.
So originally we expected that to last, or that funding to allow us to treat for two years. We have been expending our own dollars to do that at this point. So two years from wherever, whenever it's approved. But based on the cost for actual treatment, we may get three to four years out of that $300,000.
And permit wise, are we?
Permit, we are covered as long as we continue to pay our annual permit fee.
Gotcha.
So I think we're in good position. Right now, I think it's just a matter of waiting till spring and summer to see how the algae and weeds appear and treating early to make sure that we have it under control. We also are working on the Green Belt of the Lake. And I believe I've communicated to council that we will be having a workshop, or not, a workshop, a public input workshop. That's scheduled on the 13th from noon, January 13th, from noon to 2:00 PM at the Elks Lodge adjacent to the lake. And so this is to allow our consultant to get input to complete master plan for the green space around the entire.
Ellis Lake Park?
Yes. And our consultant, Roach Campbell, Jesse with Roach Campbell, is working on the master plan, has been doing stakeholder meetings with specific smaller groups. The topographic study is completed and she has pretty much all the information to start conceptually designing the features around them. That's all I have to report.
And in parallel, we have, we have our consultant continuing to look at larger issues affecting the lake. But what is, what's his, what's the status?
Oh, Dan Bergman.
Yes.
Yes, we will be continuing to look at, investigate the long-term solution or a long-term solution. And he is continuing on that as well.
Thank you. I think it's important we discuss this. Keep it there.
To the chair. Can I make a suggestion? I'm just looking at the map of Ellis Lake there. I think we should invest in some bumper stickers that say, keep Ellis Lake clean with an outline of the map like Tahoe. Keep Lake Tahoe blue. I think that'd be a good thing to do, don't you guys? All right. I'm trying to lighten the mood here a little bit. It's kind of stuffy in here tonight.
We do have, interestingly enough, some, we may have some public outreach funding available through some of our grants to do something like it.
No, the concept, I like the concept.
To the chair.
Sir.
So let me confirm this, on January 13th, from what time?
January 13th, noon to 2:00 PM. And we have a flyer which should be going out in our billings, our sewer billings.
Great, so we're.
Look like this.
So we're going to get public input, so the public is being asked to come in and give their input on what they would like to see Ellis Lake.
Yes.
Evolve into?
Ellis Lake Park.
Excellent, well, yeah. I just wanted to clarify that this is an opportunity for the public to come and speak to us before we complete the plan and not after.
And Roach Campbell will have a very well-laid out set of activities to get as much input as we can.
Okay, moving on to item number four on the agenda, the item pulled from the consent calendar. Item number four, recommend 2024 city council meeting calendar. The recommendation, pass a motion adopting the 2024 city council regular meeting calendar, identifying the first and third Tuesday of each month. And isn't the first Tuesday supposed to be after the first Monday?
Yes.
No, it's just the first Tuesday period? Oh, okay. Things you learn. Okay. Each month with three established recesses, that, those being April 16th, August 6th, and December 17th of 2024. And are there any presentations or discussion?
The only, there's no presentation, but I wanted to make a recommendation with the holiday on the first and staff not having significant urgent or important agenda items that we forego that meeting on the second and save everything for, I believe it's the.
Be the 16th.
16th, yes.
Okay, so the recommendation is amended to include January 2nd?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion of questions? What's will the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
This is second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and again, I had suggested the item which has been pulled entitled Administ Health Occupational Health Services Termination. I have since learned that they have a similar problem in Chico. So there's something of a systemic problem here that, or it's fitting for us to discuss if we should learn more about this. So that item has been pulled. We now move to committee reports and comments. Councilman Belsa.
A couple of things, nothing committee-wise to report. But I will comment in regards to, and I believe a message went out in regards to a little girl that got hurt on the playground over in Gavin Park. Jim, Chad and I were able to meet with her and her family, kind of look at what happened there, discuss some of the potential, just some different retrofit ideas, maybe some different things that we could do to help modify that park. It's obviously been a point of conversation throughout the community. So as we move into this new year, I think finding some, some retrofits will be beneficial to the community. All in all, she's going to be okay. She did knock out one of her permanent front teeth. I said, well, it's a good, it goes right along with a Christmas song, right? So, but, but she, she, she's going to be just fine and they'll, they'll be able to get her doctored up, so. But yeah, there's that report and wish everybody, since this will be our last meeting of the year, wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. I hope everybody has a good holiday season. And I don't believe I have anything else, but I might chime in later, who knows?
All right, so no committee reports today. Merry Christmas, everyone. Great job, community development. We have a lot of exciting things happening. On a sad note, I'm hearing this secondhand, but it's very disturbing when I hear that a business owner may have used racial slurs when talking with other business owners in our community. And that's just, you know, not cool. And it goes against all community development and economic prosperity.
I have no committee reports. I do want to say I had a blast at the parade, even if my two cohorts on that side didn't ride their mowers this year. It, I think that's one of the biggest crowds I've seen in a long time. The chief would probably know better than any of us. And it was, it was just, and the tree lighting was too, I think, one of the biggest things. And, but it was just a great time. And Jim, I want to thank you for taking the time to drive out to 22nd Street. I appreciated that. Thank you.
First, the tree lighting. The Kerry Hauck was instrumental in working with Paul Israni and organizing each of the grammar schools in the Marysville Joint Unified School District to have a Christmas tree decorating competition. And it was a friendly competition. Every one of the schools got a pizza party out of the deal and there was a chosen winner. And it increased the turnout. It was interesting too, as we were waiting for the event to begin, I was standing on the corner, I think with, with you, Jim, and the folks from Public Works and this young family, two children and their parents walking across the street. I said, oh good, which school are you from? Well, they were from a Yuba City school. I promptly went to Kerry and suggested that maybe we consider, since they don't have a tree lighting or anything in Yuba City, that we make this a larger community event and, and see if the grammar schools in Yuba City would be interested in competing. And, and it would, it was fun to have that many people there. All the kids, it was just absolutely grand. And it would be even more fun with more. So that's a suggestion. The parades, I've got to give thumbs up and proper's to Vice Mayor Vado Cavoli. His, his lawnmower was absolutely wonderful. Your, your Polaris and children, and you had, you had them out on the wings handing out candy?
Yeah.
That's fabulous. One comment about this, and I don't know who actually takes point at, whether it's a police car or what have you that leads the, the parade. This happened in both the Veterans Day and in the Christmas parade. Whoever's leading the parade forgets that they should move at a walking pace. And I mean, I, all of a sudden I found myself in no person's land. And I looked behind me and Bruce was, was in no person's land. Because whoever's leading the darn thing was a block, a solid block ahead of me. And one of the joys of a parade is when there's constant motion by. So I'm going to suggest that next year in all our parades, we have either a marching band or something lead the parade. Or, or, or some students carrying a banner, you know, and walking and you'll just have to wait behind. And if there's police cars behind and they have to go to a call, they can flip the siren on and really meet it or something. But it was still joyous and it was a beautiful parade, just, you know, fine tuning, fine tuning. Anyway, it was way fun. It was my first Christmas parade and I instantly felt guilty of not participating earlier in earlier parades and I won't miss it again. Sir?
Bringing up things like that, I think the one thing that we definitely needed is, this parade surprised me with the number of semis. And at the end, we needed some direction down there. Luckily Patrick Hauck was down there trying to help, but the semis couldn't turn the corners to get out of the way. So they were stopped and then it just backed up all the way. And I don't, I don't know how they finally moved enough of everything to get some of those trucks out of it. But they were, those were some of the biggest I've seen in the parade. But. We might want to ask her about putting somebody flagging at the end of it also.
It was beautifully covered and I, the photos in the newspaper was just absolutely grand. Marysville knows how to have a parade.
Oh, and I got to say, my design was done by Robin. I can't take the credit for that.
Oh, boy. Madam Clerk, any council correspondence?
Not for this meeting, mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager, anything else to report?
I'm going to take this a little out of order of my list because we were just talking about the Christmas parade. I attended the tree lighting and it was wonderful. I think it was great to have the, the school children out there with the trees. And I, I had mentioned to the mayor, I'd like to see at least 23 trees out there next year. I also, we discussed the parade in our staff meeting today absent our community development director. And it was a unanimous consensus that anything that had gone wrong was likely determined to be Nate Flores's fault. And I'm assuming, I'm assuming that'll be passed on to him shortly. No, the parade, I was unable to attend the parade. My wife Lynn is still suffering from bronchitis, so probably wasn't a good idea for her to be out in the weather. I will say we've met with Sapphire and they're already raring to go for, and planning for 4th of July and Peach Festival. That'll be on us, upon us very quickly. Would also like to say as far as events, Saturday, the 16th, oh seven, three oh hours. PD will be participating in the delivery of Christmas for 20 families within the area in conjunction with So You Can. And I think the chief is participating personally in that. So that is a wonderful thing. City Hall will be closed on the 25th and 26th to celebrate the holidays as well as January 1st. Just wanted everybody to know that. And then it looks like our next council meeting will be January 17th, based on our previous discussion. Or 16th, excuse me. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Had a few updates on business and projects. So B Street property developers have submitted their plans for review. I believe comments from other agencies are due tomorrow. And so that is moving along quite well. Our staff and consultants have been working on the necessary lot line mergers and splits to, to make the transaction happen. So very happy with that. Some less positive news, the cigar box was shut down by the alcohol, alcoholic beverage control folks. But we already have interested parties interested in putting in a Mexican-style cantina. Did I get that right? Good news, the Marysville market is back up and running. The sewer has been repaired and so they are reopened and ready to serve the community. Glacier Ice Property has been cleaned up. If you go by there, it's, they did a great job of cleaning everything up. There is one nagging item on our property that we need to address, but otherwise it's great. If you happen to go by King Clothing, right here on Sixth and C, they are recipients of a facade grant. And they're putting up some brick veneer on, on the side of the building, which looks very nice. So that, that's a great result from our facade grant program. I stopped by the Training Zone today. The Training Zone new location, Long's Drugs, and it is moving right along. Mr. Gill was on site and indicated that they may be opening in one to two months. So moving right along. I believe the Nakagawa Building closed escrow that, on that property, so that one's moving. And Mr. Flores has been keeping a very close eye on the Maryville Hotel and the other urban smart growth properties. And then last of all, did you bring that poster board up? So this was shown to me today, preliminary pictures of 313 D Street, across from the brick, renovating that with some commercial on the bottom and residential on top. How many units of residential? Six units on top. So that's another development that seems to be materializing.
Who's the developer? Do we know what the commercial on the ground floor is going to be? Perfect. Perfect. That's good news. Really good news.
Moving on to projects, the Measure C paving is nearly complete. We are reassessing the striping on 22nd. And, and as soon as Mr. Maoulin gets back from Japan, we'll, Vincenzo and he and I will be discussing that. The Fifth Street Bridge, just so everybody is aware, we will be shutting one lane down tomorrow from nine to, one-ish? Three? Okay. To repair the damaged crash cushions that have been hit in the past. Our staff, both the police chief and fire chief, were able to investigate the incidents, get the information on the people that ran into it, hand that to our finance folks who have subrogated. And we have recovered money for one of the crash barriers and working on the second one so that that won't come out of our pocket. So that was great work on our staff's part. so that that won't come out of our pocket. So that was great work on our staff's part. Further to that, in January, we couldn't fit it in with the barrier repairs, but we do intend to do, work with Yuba City to do some enhancements to the, to the warning signs as you come over the bridge, including a radar feedback sign, just to get people to know that, that gore in the bridge is there, and they need to make a decision on which lane they want to be in before they hit the barriers. So that, Vincenzo has been working with Yuba City folks. They have to go through some processes for council approval, but we expect that in mid to late January. Our next street-related projects will likely be the Mode Shift project on 14th Street and the community design project on D Street. Talked about Ellis Lake already. On the Gavin Park side of things, I, I did get a price on the slide, but we are waiting on pricing for the tot lot from Roach Campbell. Once we have that, we'll be looking to move forward to add those features to that park. And in our discussion with the family, I think we came up with at least two solutions to potentially, or to, to reduce the risk of the accident that their, their daughter had there. So that was good news. We're nearly completed with bid specs for the fire auxiliary building. So that will be coming to council for approval after we bid it out and get a contractor ready to go on that. We're also working on, starting to work on bid specifications for the Annex Building, which is going to house YCOE staff. And our target for completion of construction is in roughly May of 2024. Another project that has come to fruition is our leachate conveyance project, and that was to take leachate, basically liquids that are coming off of the recology landfill area, compost area, and convey them through our sewer system over to Linda. It's been operating for about three and a half months. Our revenue so far has been about $16,000. So we expect, and, and that's pretty close to the projections that Mr. Bergman made. So we expect roughly $100,000 in revenue from that project each year. We also have a project moving forward to replace three storm drain pumps funded by the Air District, actually 85% funded by the Air District, and expect to do those in the spring of 2024. We don't want to do them in the winter timeframe when it's raining because we need them to be operational at that point in time. And then last of all on projects is, we will likely also be bringing in the spring timeframe recommendations for energy efficiency upgrades and upgrades to City Hall in general, as, as we had recommended in our budget process. So I, I wanted to share all that with you because we do have a, a bit of time between our next meeting, and I wanted you to know what we would be working on during that time. A lot of projects we have in the works, and the big task now is to implement them. So.
Sir, last week I bumped into Catherine Rosser at, at an event, and she gave me something of an update on what's going on with Cotton's statue. And she said it's, they're trying to get it across the Rockies, and they want to, they're being very careful with, with this. Do we have any update on the timing of, of the placement and
Honestly, I
Result in dedication?
I do not because it's technically not a city project, but I believe
It's on city property.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, so Cotton himself and Rodney the Horse have been completed, and he is still in Utah, and the artist, Tom Wolfe, is waiting for the snow season to end. And then he will be transported here to Marysville in the spring. Hopefully, we will have the concrete base completed along with the sidewalk poured and signage altered here in Marysville. And the committee has chosen, the contractor has been chosen, and, and all of that will happen before the spring so that Cotton can go right into place as soon as he arrives. So that should be in the spring.
That should be a grand event.
Yes. And then, and then, and then all of the, the event that will be announced as soon as we know exactly when he's coming.
So sometime in the spring.
Sometime in the spring.
I had one other item related to the Rossers particularly. There has been discussion about the Cowboy Corral neon sign in the past, and that, that project was submitted to us through the facade improvement grant program. And I think that we want to move forward with that. And I think that will be a very nostalgic and attractive sign once it's restored. So that should be coming as well.
Okay. As the city manager mentioned, the next regular city council meeting will be Tuesday, January 16th, 6:00 p.m. And please remember that the December 19th council meeting has been recessed, meaning canceled. Madam Clerk, you have something to share?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. After closed session, the city council will leave the council chambers, and the meeting will be adjourned by operation of law due to lack of a quorum. If there's any reportable closed session action, a report will be made at the beginning of the next regular council meeting. I ask that after the closed session, item descriptions are read by the mayor, that all members of council, applicable consultants, and staff join the closed session meeting.
Okay. And we will be moving into closed session, as the city clerk mentioned. If anyone would like to comment on the matter, you're attending the meeting in person, please complete a speaker's card. If you're online, raise your hand via Zoom, and you'll be recognized in order. Madam Clerk?
No public speakers, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am. Matter to be discussed in closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 5495 6.9, conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation, a worker's compensation settlement item, name of case Ricky Kettermanson, Kettermanson, claim with the attached claim number. We're now adjourned. Sorry, Robert.